Of Water in Yuba County was really fascinating to a lot of the viewers. And for myself personally, I did have a chance to also view the film and it was my first time seeing the film. And I thought the images and personal interviews added a nice touch, you know, really showing the history and what we've gone through and how deeply connected we are to the water. And I think you all did a wonderful job making it and I just want to let you know the story you're telling is so important to our community. And I definitely read that in all of the viewers who saw the film. Really felt like it was something, a story that needed to be told and they were excited that you guys had made this film. So thank you for making it and thank you for allowing us to show it at the festival. And I do want to say, Dee Dee, your narration, I loved your narration. I thought you did such a great job with that. And yeah, just wonderful film. And Owen, Dawn, thank you for coming on one of the Swan tours. It was great having you there to actually see the festival in action. And I'm here if you guys have any questions or comments for me about the event.
Any questions or comments from the board? Okay, looks like none. Thank you, Lisa, for taking the time and joining us today to provide the update.
Yeah, thank you all. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving. Any in-person or any in-person public comment? Okay, seeing none, no more additional virtual, right? Okay, with that, excuse me, move on to consent items. There are two items on consent. Any questions or comments from board members? Yeah, so the consent is just the minutes from our last meeting and the Power Systems and General Fund financial report. There was at the Pod Committee, there was some public comment related to restrooms. Is that what you're asking about? So sure, I guess we can, you can ask staff now.
Thank you. I think I can address that. So there was a question from a constituent about the bathroom grant that Yuba Water gave to the county to build bathrooms up at Pioneer Park. And that was referred to staff to answer that it was a legitimate, legitimate bathrooms. I think that the impression that the constituent has is that those restrooms were built for a private business. And that's not the case, but we are making sure that everything was in order and then we will answer, we will answer in writing with a copy to Director Messick, so he knows what's going on.
Great. Thank you, Terry. Okay, so with no additional questions or comments on the consent agenda, is there a motion? Thank you, Charlie. Have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Next, we'll move on to discussion items, starting with item three, consider approval of updates to the sponsorship policy. Good morning, Terry.
Good morning, Terry Daly again, Assistant General Manager. So on September 19th, we brought, the staff brought a recommendation to the board to update the sponsorship policy. That policy was originally approved by the board in 2020, so it seemed like it was time for an update. There were some questions that were asked on that presentation on September 19th. So we've researched those questions and bring them back today. But just to remind everybody, what we were talking about there is that the policy, the reason we have a sponsorship policy is really to be transparent to the public and to staff of why we have a sponsorship policy and why we give sponsorships and how that happens and how it works. So we want to outline a process that's easy for the applicants and easy to administer. We wanted to include our employees in the process and to stay, of course, within the legal parameters and to limit any liability to the agency. So the major changes in the policy update that was presented to you on September 19th and are in it today is just to clarify that the purpose of the sponsorships is to advance the agency purpose by publicizing, promoting, developing, and really communicating the agency's mission and the services and programs that we offer. The sponsorships can go to government entities or not-for-profits. These sponsorships can't go to an event that is promoting religious or political viewpoints. That the amount of the sponsorship is appropriate to the size and impact of the event. So that one is like, not just everybody gets automatically $5,000, that kind of thing. Kept the same parameters that up to $2,500, that is, can be approved by the Staff Committee. And anything over that needs board approval, so we would bring it to the board. So at the last meeting on September 19th, there were two questions, two major questions asked. The first one was, why are we excluding religious organizations from receiving sponsorships? And the second one is, is the Baka'i Festival a religious event or a religious organization? So on the, let me answer the first question, which is, why are we excluding religious events? Or events that are put on by a religious organization? We worked on county, we worked with county council, we worked with general counsel on researching this, the answer to this question. And really, there are two ways we could go. The first one is that if a religious organization, a church, is putting on an event that is purely secular in nature and meets all the other parameters of our sponsorship policy, then we could give them a sponsorship or we could sponsor, help to sponsor their event. However, it has to be a secular event and there can be no promoting of a religious viewpoint or proselytizing or advocating for any particular point of view. That seems pretty straightforward and pretty simple, but in really thinking it through, first of all, we'd have to, we'd have to really evaluate the event and all the materials that are going out there and all the advertising that was going out for the event. But secondly, really to to protect the agency from liability, I think we'd really have to have a staff person go to each of those events to make sure that there wasn't any proselytizing or promoting a religious viewpoint at the event. We think that's an undue burden, administrative burden on the staff. Would take a lot more time and frankly, I think it would put the agency and that staff person in a really awkward position to go to an event and if anything did happen, they'd have to stop it. They'd have to say publicly, hey, we didn't, we didn't sign up to sponsor this viewpoint, so we're taking our sponsorship back. That would be, that would be awkward and difficult and frankly, not a really good perception of the agency. So staff is continuing to recommend that we have a religious organization exclusion in the policy. As far as the Baka'i Festival, the Baka'i Festival is run through the Marysville Chinese Cultural Preservation, Inc. It is an IRS-approved nonprofit, a public charity run for the purpose of cultural and historic preservation. No religious beliefs are advocated or promoted. So it is, it is ours and our attorney's opinion that we could, you could continue to sponsor the Baka'i Parade. So with that, I'm happy to answer any other questions you have.
Questions or comments from board members?
Through the chair.
I think it's 5B6. The last couple of words I really like, it says, "or obvious public benefit." So I guess I'd only be curious as to how narrowly or broadly we have that exception of public benefit. So I think there was a Red Kettle kickoff for the Salvation Army last month at the Hard Rock. I think they talked about that they're going to use money to feed homeless or shelter homeless or feed the hungry. They have an event this Thursday where they're going to have opened up a Thanksgiving meal up to the public. Everyone's invited. 11 o'clock at the fairgrounds, by the way. So those sorts of events are obviously public in nature and I don't believe the Salvation Army is known for proselytizing at their events or directing a specific viewpoint so much as just serving those in need. So those events would qualify under the public benefit on Section 5B6, correct?
Yes, as long, yes, especially if there's more than one sponsor of the event.
They're the only sponsor of both of those events.
Okay, then we would have to go through, you know, the same process I just outlined, that we'd really have to
So the section in 5B6 where it says, "if it's for public benefit," you would still hold them to a different standard than any other organization?
Yes, because it is a religious-based organization and we have to ensure that no religious message or advocating any religious point of view would be part of the event.
So I think that most of us have attended one of the Red Kettle kickoffs in previous years. Did you feel that there was immense religious push or was it really just to garner money for the community? I think it was pretty evident that we've all been to those events and that was their set. I guess I don't want to see a higher burden put on some organizations over others because that seems discriminatory and if it's known that what they do is community service, that seems to be fit into that section that you have in there. And I really liked that I said the wording there, but it means that the previous section where it was discriminatory is unneeded. So I guess I would edit 5B6 to just be for public benefit. Because that's really what the goal of the sponsorships are, is either for promoting the Water Agency or some other public benefit, right?
Well, actually, the purpose of the sponsorship is to educate the public on the Yuba Water Agency and our missions.
Sure. So when the Rotary does something, and they do lots of work, if they do a pizza party for their executive board, we're not going to sponsor that.
Correct.
But if they put up a community dinner where they invite hundreds of people to eat Thanksgiving turkey at the fairgrounds at 11 o'clock on Thursday, oh, Salvation Army doing that, I'm sorry, then that would be something that we could do because that would still promote the Water Agency to the same degree that the other things that we've done sponsorships for promotes the Water Agency, right?
Yes, given the facts that you're giving me, I would say yes.
Okay, so my only suggestion is to edit, to edit 5B6 to that, that community exception, good, community good exception. I think that's really the key to that section there as opposed to isolating or discriminatory towards certain groups.
I think there are two important parts. First of all, is that it is a secular event and carries no religious advocacy with it. And secondly, for the public good. Where we could educate the public on the Yuba Water, so, you know, everything else would be the same. If we feel, one thing we could do is if we feel that there's a question about the proselytizing or the religious message, we could bring it to the board.
I was going to suggest that the board, the policy is generally to guide the norm, right? But an exception, the board always has the authority to act, I don't want to say contrary to the policy, but, but make exceptions to the policy.
That's correct.
And so that would maybe be a suggestion is that if, for example, the Red Kettle event, you know, the board wanted to do a sponsorship at that event, it could be considered by the board and the board could make a decision at that time, is that?
Yeah, I think Terry just answered in the affirmative that the board can make an exception to their policy and that situation would be very similar to going above and beyond the $2,500 limit. So if, for example, someone requested that we sponsor, we sponsor a Red Kettle event or something similar and we analyze it as a religious organization, but we were really looking at sponsoring it because of the secular nature and the fact that it's for public benefit, even if it's only $1,000, we could bring it to the board and say, hey, this one's on the edge of our policy. Because it's on the edge of our policy, we would like board approval to sponsoring a select number of those events. It's up to over 100 annually, but are we getting our mission out there? And are we educating the public in a diverse way by sponsoring a diverse range of nonprofits and other public entities? And I think we need to step back and make sure that that is exactly what we're doing and looking at it from an agency objective standpoint, not necessarily a who's excluded and who's included.
Do we need then to say, I'm trying to think when we sponsored, we've had our, you know, tent on the side street where it said what we were doing. And when we talk about a food event, are we also then saying that we'll have a poster or banner talking, that's our communication to the people coming that we're sponsoring? Do we need to add that into our sponsorship that, like you say, to get dollar, get a bang for the dollar, that we have some kind of postage or table or event that gives us the message that we are getting the value for the sponsorship?
So generally, that goes back to ensuring that our, the amount we sponsor, the dollar amount we sponsor is consistent with the amount of eyeballs or the impact it's going to have, the positivity it's going to have in communication. So I'm going to give you an example and this isn't, you know, hard numbers, but I'm just going to give you a general example. We put a banner up at a Little League field for the season. That might be a $500 sponsorship, right? Okay, then we sponsor an event, like some downtown event in Marysville. That might be a $2,500 sponsorship and it would not just be a banner. It would be a booth that's staffed by volunteers from the agency and we're handing out information about New Bullard's Bar and recreation and flood control and water supply, so that justifies five times the 500. So that's generally how we do it.
Very good.
Any?
I have a question through the chair. Benz is District 5 is 82 and a half percent of the county. I think we ought to try to push 82 and a half percent of the sponsorships into District 5.
Population-wise, you're 20%?
I know, but we're almost spread out, so it's harder to get our message out. We have to, we have to spend more to get our message out in District 5. It's not, not everybody has internet up there.
Look, here's, here's the reality. Staff will implement board's policy. The board wants to develop a policy where we spend 82% of our sponsorship in District 5. Here's six of the seven members here today, give us that direction.
Just want to make it easier to reach my constituents because they don't all have internet. They don't all
We understand the desire.
Okay.
I'm having a little hard time following just because I didn't, you know, I read through this and we talked about it last time, but I'm not, I don't have the context of that language, Seth, that you're mentioning.
Yeah, I think Terry hasn't pulled up. It's 5B6, I want to say. And like I said, the last couple of words are really good. It talks about public benefit, that there's an obvious reason. And that to me seemed to be, and correcting how the reading of it should be because I read it as the exception to everything that was said previously. In other words, you can't be a person who receives sponsorship unless you're fit in this criteria and then there's, or there's going to be public benefit. And so I like the fact that there's that exception. That's how I read it. But I was curious how narrow or broad that exception would be. So if you could read 5B6.
Sure. So right now, the language in the draft before the board is confirmation that the activity is being conducted by a nonreligious, nonprofit organization, government agency, educational institution, or there is otherwise a demonstrated public benefit.
And so the other, or otherwise demonstrated public benefit to me seems to say it could be some other organization besides what limited earlier. As long as it demonstrates public benefit, which is why I like that addition of wording there. I just made it because of that, it seems like that should be the key thing as opposed to the exception. I would just get rid of the previous and just say, there's a demonstrated public benefit. And then I would shorten that clause and make it very much, that is what it's all about.
Again, I will point out that the purpose of our sponsorships are not for public benefit. They're to educate the public about the missions of the Yuba Water Agency.
Absolutely. That's what the rest of the stuff is. 5B, 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. So I'm saying number 6, that's, that's specific.
Right. And I, I believe the intended meaning there was that if there is an event that is being put on by a religious organization, if it is purely secular and it provides a public benefit, then we could do that. We could, the board could sponsor that.
Without having to come back to the board, just
Without, but
It'd be the agency's ability to not burden everybody.
Correct. We would go through the administrative steps to ensure that there was no religious message. If there was, as, as for any of our policies, if staff wasn't sure or wanted the board to weigh in on it, we would bring it back to the board.
Do we want to add that, that if staff has a question, whether it's a religious thing, then they bring it to the board? Rather than just deny it?
I'll adjust that. We basically have that discretion. That's the way we operate. If we get to something that's controversial, whether it's a sponsorship policy or any other situation the agency gets put in, if we feel that the board needs to weigh in on a decision we're making, we bring it to the board, basically in every realm we operate in.
So I would move that we accept the sponsorship policy with just the edit on 5B6 to just have the section about for public benefit as opposed to the more complicated wording of not these groups except when they're doing this thing, because then it still means the same thing effectively. Does that make sense?
Don't you think we have to have a nonreligious thing in there?
There is earlier.
I, I think we have to have those requirements as listed, but that's my
Earlier, I believe, in 5B and in, maybe 4, at the end of 4, it talks about it.
I don't know. I think, personally, I think the language in 5B6 is important to have in there. Because again, as staff mentioned, the purpose is not just public benefit. The purpose is
So in 4E, it says expenditure shall avoid supporting or endorsing the perception or the perception of supporting or endorsing any political candidate, issues, or campaign, or any religion or religious point of view. So they already have that in 4E.
So, but I, but I think an important piece, looking beyond just the discussion related to religious organizations. If you did not have 5B6, what about a for-profit corporation that was doing something for public benefit? Right? By default, the sponsorship would, would necessarily, you know, that, that might be, or they were doing an event for profit. Right? I think if, as long as it had public benefit associated with it, I think if you don't have the language in 5B, then that would potentially be allowed under the policy. And so that's why I think it's, it's important to have. Personally, I think I like the language in 5B6 and think it's important that we have it there. And I am appreciative of the opportunity for the board to weigh in in specific cases and provide an exception to the policy if we believe that it may be a religious organization, but the event is secular and for public purpose.
Also, can I ask, I had a comment to Seth. 4 is requirements and eligibility and 5 is sponsorship application process. So, and it says confirmation, so that's telling staff, basically directing them what to do when they have the process. And 4 is just eligibility and requirements out to the public. So I think we ought to leave the wording in there as well.
Okay, well, like I said at the very beginning, as long as we're interpreting the last couple of words broadly, not narrowly, I think that those last couple of words obviate the earlier part in any malevolent or negative way.
Okay, so you made a motion though, right?
I did. I will retract that motion. I guess I wanted to start clarification. The, my, my understanding is that exception of, or for the public good, isn't, is the exception to all of the previous. And it can be interpreted as the example that I keep using of Salvation Army.
So the intent here is to define a process that we can implement simply. We're going to have over 100 sponsorship applications annually and we want to be efficient. What we want to do is ensure that we're not going outside some type of legal boundary for a campaign event or a religious event, a political, whatever it is. The way staff will implement this policy, if approved as written, is we will be conservative around it. And if we see something that might be on the edge of legality or our policy, we're going to bring it to the board, whether it's $5,000 or $500. So that's how we'll operate. That's how we do operate. We're going to be creative. The agency's creative. We're going to look at the intent of the sponsorship and the intent of the event. But in processing over 100 applications a year, we need to have something that's efficient where even one isn't scrutinized to a level that causes inefficiency and the benefit of the sponsorship policy is not basically seen. We're going to, we're going to, we're going to implement the policy in a conservative way.
And good news, guys. 82 of those won't be from District 5, but we're going to have plenty.
Because 85 of them will be.
Okay, so you withdrew your motion. So is there, is there a motion, an alternate motion?
I would move that we approve the policy as written.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is item 4, consider, oh, you know what? I did not do public comment on that item, so just really quickly, I know we've already voted, but is there any public comment on that item? Okay, seeing none. Item 4, consider approval of revisions to the reserves policy. Morning, Curtis.
Thank you. Good morning. Yes, at long last, update to the reserves policy. Here on the screen. Did that go away? All right. We'll start with a little bit of a history. The original reserve policy was adopted in December 2016. That was about six months after we took possession of revenue from the Power Systems function. So we thought, hey, we might have some reserves, so let's get a reserve policy. I think the one in effect prior to that was a sticky note that said, get reserves, so we can have a reserve policy. In June 2020, we did a pretty thorough revision. In that revision, we established the designations, so emergency designation, operating designation, to really define the purpose for those dollars within the reserve policy. The first few designations began to be data-driven. Back in 2020, we were collecting data on operating expenses. Our trends had a little bit of history, so we were able to support those targets with some data. And then we really assigned the $200 million. It's kind of a lofty goal at that point in time. Our capital improvement plans were far larger, but we sort of rounded to 200 million again as the lofty goal. Here in November of 2023, this revision has a couple of other goals. The first one is now all designations are data-driven. We think that really justifies the reserve policy and provides some strength to the reserve policy. The second is we took a look at the procedures for revisions for the reserve policy. With a little more clarity on when the reserve policy and the status of the reserve designations will be reviewed. They're now more thoroughly incorporated in the audit and budget process. I think that's important to get that in front of you guys for the status of the reserves in front of the public or the status of our reserves. It's much more in the foreground than it was prior. The third goal was to split the funds, as you noticed in the prior reserve policy. It was one reserve policy. Now it's split Power Systems and General Fund. One reason for doing this is we spent the better part of a year working with S&amp;P, having them review us as a credit profile, as if we were to go issue bonds from the Power Systems Fund. We wanted to get an indicative credit rating and they had some feedback for us on some of the things that we were doing. The big one was the reserve policy. Everything else about the way that the agency does their financials clearly separates Power Systems and General Fund until we got to the reserve policy. So now we've made that split. Again, all designations in each fund are data-driven and we think that's, it's a lot stronger. S&amp;P confirmed that that was a lot stronger. So that was definitely a goal of this one. So with those goals in mind, I will jump and hit the highlights. So with those goals in mind, I will jump and hit the highlights. What has changed? I'll quickly go through the designation. So again, two funds. We'll start with power systems at the top. The first two designations there are unchanged in, in definition. The targets have been adjusted, but the operating reserve is the reserve designated in case we have a bad revenue year. These funds are designed to keep the agency operating without layoffs. All the O and M is still complete for two years. This used to be one year. S and P said there is a lot of value in going from one year to two years in reserves. So we went ahead and did that and the target is thirty-seven point one based on how we've been tracking O and M and power systems. This is really kind of bare bones. This isn't the non-operating stuff. We'll get to that designation later on. The emergency reserve is more or less unchanged by definition. This is the the funds set aside in case there is some disaster or big equipment failure, some big ticket item goes wrong. We need the cash on hand to, to navigate that issue. We have broadened it slightly in this update. A lot of the data behind the emergency reserve looks at the disaster declarations in the beginning of 2017. Although those projects were on ninety-six percent funded by FEMA, we still needed the cash on hand because that's a reimbursement program. So in order to get started on the repairs, we had to have the cash on hand and then wait for the reimbursements to come in through FEMA organized by CalOES. And that could take some time. For example, the South Canal intake that we had to dredge back in 2017, still waiting on the final check today from FEMA. So definitely need that cash flow. Our partners in the county may also experience some loss if there is an event. This is just one county. So we could definitely see some of our other partners having some issues. Those issues may also be FEMA-funded. So we could use this designation to support our partners while they're waiting for that cash flow from FEMA. So we broadened that definition a little bit in this, in this rewrite. On the power system side, that target's now forty million. A new designation from 2020 that's now in this 2023 revision in power systems is energy sales risk. This is responding to the updated shell sales agreement where we now have the ability to directly sell a few of our energy products, fifty megawatts of RA. We're able to sell carbon-free direct and bilaterals. Particularly the RA product, if we were to fail to meet that obligation, if we had a forced outage or something like that, we would have to go into the open market and procure replacement resource adequacy. This twenty-four million dollar target, investment target here in the reserve policy would mitigate the cash flow impacts. We could be in a situation where the RA in the open market at the time, we need to replace it is far more expensive than what we sold it for initially. The twenty-four million is, is meant to safeguard that delta. Last one in power systems, the non-routine and capital projects, the target is now one twenty-four point nine. We'll look at the funded column here in a second, but the target is one twenty-four point nine. What we have done is we've taken our capital improvement plan, which has evolved considerably, particularly since 2016. It's now more or less a ten-year plan. We were aiming for a five-year plan in, in previous versions of the reserve policy. But we've taken the first five years and we found the average annual spend times two. And that's going to be our target in the non-routine and capital project reserve designation. By that definition, that reserve designation will change each year. The target will change each year as we complete our capital improvement plan. We refresh our capital improvement plan. We move projects forward or backwards. So in those annual updates, you'll see that target shift. We'll evaluate the other ones as well. Those ones we don't anticipate to shift annually, but definitely the non-routine and capital project target will shift annually. Moving to general funds, same definitions for operating and emergency, operating in general, in general fund up to forty-one million. Emergency thirty million. Bond payment definition is the same. This is the reserve designation that is tied to the trillabonds. This is now two years of debt service, not one. Again, S and P said there's a lot of value in upping it to two years. Bond investors are looking at that as a sign of strength. So we went ahead and incorporated a two-year target. Same definition in general fund for the non-routine and capital. It's a two twenty-three point nine. Be mindful that seems like the arc spillway and relicensing are still residing in general fund. When those, when we get a new license or we begin construction on the arc spillway, that'll shift into power systems where it'll live on. But currently, despite the way the books have been kept, since the relicensing process started, it currently resides in general fund. So you look at the reserve target for capital improvement projects. There's more in general fund. That's the big driver. Why is, is our spillway lives in general fund? Pause briefly for questions on the definitions of these targets before we talk about the funding priority.
Questions from the board or comments?
The comment I'd like to make on this entire project is that we're a unique agency that we have a tremendous reserve. And I want to try to justify the reserve. And by justifying it, you would look at things like what happened at Oroville. They had a spillway. They had a major problem. So for our longevity, I think we can justify the reserve. But we have to be diligent that we do it in a deliberate manner that just doesn't look like we're trying to stack up money. So I would, we spent a lot of time on this, but I think it's extremely important that we have it done right. I think we're getting very close to having it done right.
To the chair. The whole process that was initiated because of the S and P saying they wanted to see these reserves policy awesome. Looking forward to the future, the idea there is we're going to get a rating. Have they indicated what that approximately would be as far as a rating and what would that be?
Yes. So we have a draft report and we have four scenarios that are currently under review from S and P. But I will tell you that the rating isn't, isn't fantastic. And some of the things that they latched on to is Colgate is eighty to eighty-five percent of the revenue and power systems. And when we started this process is when we had a wildfire across the river that had crested the ridge. That was, um, one thing that they latched on to is having all of that revenue from one site in the middle of a wildfire-prone area. Power Systems is also a bit of a price taker. We do pack generation of the high-priced hours in the market, but we're still subjected to the market. We're still subjected to hydrology. There's not a lot of diversification. So they see that over a thirty-year bond issuance is a pretty significant risk. So we could do things like adopt this reserve policy and we would be triple B plus, which is the lowest level of investment grade, which is good. But we were probably all anticipating much stronger credit rating, given the revenue that we've had in recent years and the reserves that we've amassed thus far. So Charlie's got a great point. There are some significant risks out there. We're the only ones that can fund those risks. We can't raise the, the rates on, on our ratepayers like some other organizations. We do have FEMA as a backstop, but as I mentioned, we need the cash flow. Hopefully that answers your question.
Is that it for questions at this point?
Very good. Thank you. We did address the funding priorities and put them into a bit of a table here. I'll quickly go through them. We start in power systems reserve. That's priority one. The operating reserve is priority one. The thought here is we want to keep power systems O and M up. We want those folks to remain employed in the event of a really bad revenue shortfall. And the bulk of our consistent revenue will come from power systems. We assign that priority one. Similar concept, but on the general fund side and operating. Keep all those ongoing operations, keep those employees onboard. That's funding priority two. Move down to a funding priority three, back over to power systems, emergency. If there's a big equipment failure in power systems, we want to get power systems back online. Given how important they are to the agency's overall revenue stream. General fund emergency reserve will be priority four. Energy sales risk is funding priority five. We have that above levy bond payment at funding priority six, just because the levy bond payment is the JPA with the county and Yuba Water Agency, whereas energy sales risk is solely agency. We're, we're going to save for that one first. And then the non-routine and capital designations are our final two funding priorities. Because there's some flexibility on when to spend those dollars. If a big piece of equipment breaks in power systems or general fund, we need to repair that. If there's some sort of constraint on cash flow, we can phase our capital improvement projects. We can push one out. We can wait for external grant funding. So that's why those are our final two priorities. So we know questions on that one. I will jump down to procedure. We'll talk a little bit about those updates that we made. There it is. All right. We wanted to document exactly how this policy, the definition of these designations would be changed. So we'll really focus on the second paragraph here. Edits to the definitions or the methods for arriving on what these targets are for, for the reserve designations or the priorities. We've assigned requiring a five-seventh vote that keeps the reserve policy from changing year to year. We will evaluate it year to year. We will adjust the targets with the data, the same data-driven analysis that we did to arrive at these targets. But to change the whole makeup or funding priority in the reserve policy will take a five-seventh vote. Withdrawing funds from the reserve policy will be a simple majority. But there's two ways that we would do that. The first would be during the budget process. If there's a really large capital project, we are not forecasting revenues going to cover expenses in that year. The budget would require a simple majority withdrawing the funds would be called out in the budget as it's approved, simple majority across the board. The second way you would withdraw funds would be through an emergency declaration. If Ashram Road were ten times larger, the emergency declaration would have come with a budget adjustment calling out what we would need to withdraw from the emergency designation in our reserve policy. The emergency declaration itself already requires a super majority. The intent there is to get the board involved in the reserve policy decisions. And to really kind of bring it to the forefront. So everybody is fully aware of what's in reserves. Those are the highlights and accomplish the goals that I, I mentioned at the beginning. Next steps. Assuming this is approved here today, it will be incorporated in the audit for the financial year ending six thirty, twenty twenty-three. So I've kind of held the audit off anticipating an adjustment to the reserves. At that point, we will update the funded portion of the, of this table here. Over to it. The table that's currently in the reserve policy shows funded status as of six thirty, twenty twenty-two. In the audit that we are aiming to bring before you December fifth in our next board meeting, we'll incorporate this reserve policy and this will be the funded status for six thirty, twenty twenty-three. So you'll see power systems will finish funding their non-routine and capital. So power systems as a whole will be 100% funded. General fund then will begin filling their last bucket, the non-routine and capital project to the tune of forty-seven point nine million. So overall, it'll be forty-three percent funded. So that'll be the next step. And then you'll see budget on December nineteenth. We don't anticipate needing to withdraw, but that would be the next time you would see this reserve policy. Going forward, the audit will be the, the time that we will annually review this policy because the, the audit includes a note that will be this new table here in the reserve policy. So we're to keep it uniform from the policy to the audit and again, keep it in the forefront. Before I close, I want to thank the ABP committee, Director Matthews, Director Bishop and Director Blazer. I think we've invested three different meetings into landing on what we have here. I think the reserve policy is coming awful long ways from 2016. So thank you all for your support.
Great. Thank you. Go ahead.
Curtis stole my thunder. The ABP had some pretty robust discussions about this reserves policy and I just want to further compliment the ABP and working through that. It just shows the value of these subcommittees we have. And at times they're routine meetings that we just go through and have the meetings and get approval of a subcommittee before something comes to the board. This took three pretty detailed lengthy meetings where the ABP committee made recommendations to revisions. Curtis, and I got to thank Curtis as well. Curtis would go back, revise accordingly and bring it back to the board, or sorry, the subcommittee. Just wanted to point out how effective that process was and I just support those subcommittees going forward. And I'd like to also thank the, the members of the subcommittee.
Thank you. Before we move to board commenting questions, I'll just check and see if there's any public comment in this item. Okay. Any board comment or questions? Okay. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Okay. Have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Great. Thank you, Curtis. Thank you, APP. Next, we will move on to item five, consider approval of an expenditure in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand to fund two patrol vehicles for the Yuba County Sheriff's Deputy Positions that patrol New Bullards Bar Reservoir and the surrounding area.
Great. I'm back. So but our FERC license requires that we provide security to our project, which of course is New Bullards Bar Reservoir and all the surrounding areas. So to do that, we have a contract with the Yuba County Sheriff's Office to provide security to our project, which is a contract for the services of the equivalent of two deputies and all that it requires to have deputies. So cars, equipment, everything that they need. This is a really good example. I just want to point out to you that this isn't a grant. We, when we have to provide services as a result of our business, we will often contract with the county to provide those. We don't want to start our own sheriff's office, right? Within the Yuba Water Agency. So it's just a, a good example of we will use other government entities when we can to provide those services. So we are paying the county and specifically the county SO for these services. Earlier this year, we met with the sheriff and had a verbal approval and a preliminary approval because it was just from staff to provide two new vehicles for the deputies that are up there and they agreed upon agreed upon cost was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The expenditure was not included in the June budget. And so we need to have your approval to pay for these vehicles and that's why we're bringing it to you now. Happy to answer any questions.
Through the chair. Give us a little back history on what we've done in the past.
I think Curtis might be able to help me on this, but for several years now, we have provided several years. Like before we came out from under PG&E, we contracted with the sheriff for these two deputies and whatever they needed.
It was mainly personnel at that point.
It was personnel and when they needed new, new vehicles, we would come separately and, and ask for that. So that's basically what's happening now.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I assume so.
Okay. Have a, have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Next, you will move on to the management's report.
All right. Well, New Bullards Bar is at six hundred and forty-eight thousand acre feet. That's a hundred and twenty percent of normal. That's not because of a heavy beginning to our water year. It's because of carryover storage from the heavy year last year. It's actually been pretty light the last six weeks of this water year, but don't worry, we're still super early in the water year. We've only seen sixty percent of our average inflow year to date. Here again, the bulk of our water year is January through March. Colgate unit number one is currently out on annual maintenance and should be back by the end of the month. We're currently releasing a little over a thousand CFS at Narrows one and two for downstream demand and accord flows. The power system headquarters project in Oregon House is going really well. I've been driving by that, you know, for several months and waiting to see concrete come out of the ground. And there's been a lot of dirt work, which that was required. But now we're starting to see concrete come out of the ground, which was their goal is to get concrete poured before the, the heavy winter rains. So that's where they're at now. Electrical and mechanical underground is, you know, being completed so that they can get the concrete going, but they're making good progress there. We're currently undertaking some significant repairs, normal annual repairs on the New Bullards Bar spillway. That should be done by December in preparation. That should be done by December in preparation for winter and springtime spills if needed. Last week, we submitted the Narrows relicensing application to FERC. You remember, we bought the Narrows project, the twelve megawatt project from PG&E in spring of twenty twenty, knowing that the expiration of that license was coming up and that we'd have to relicense it. So we worked to prepare the relicensing application and we got it submitted and accepted by FERC last week. On the human relations front, we have two new employees since we last spoke. Dustin Eggleston, he's a plant mechanic. He started on the seventh. And Paul Chizzy is a ditch tender who started on November fifteenth. And we're currently in the pre-employment stages with our operator, senior hydro engineer and elect tech positions. And once complete, these soon-to-be employees will be starting in December and January. We're also in the interviewing stages with both procurement specialists and help desk technician and are continuing to accept applications and screening candidates for the hydro electrical engineering position. And HR staff is in the planning stages for recruitment of an administrative assistant and general counsel. The general counsel will go through a recruiter and we'll start that process in December. On the communications front, our celebration marking the completion of the Hallwood Side Channel and Floodplain Restoration Project was well attended last week with more than fifty people joining us on the river to see the results and hear from project leaders about the partnership and collaboration that made it so successful. We had great coverage at the event from KCRAT three, CBS thirteen and the Appeal Democrat. The coverage was also picked up after the, after the fact by the CBS affiliate in Monterey, the NBC and CBS affiliates in Chico and Yubanet. Newsletters for Aqua, DWR and Maven's Notebook all ran a version of the story as well. And NACWA included an article from me about it as their blog last week. Other coverage since the last board meeting includes the grant to District Ten and the non-interest loan to the South member units, which was featured in the Appeal Democrat. Aquaphornia, the Water Education Foundation's newsletter also picked up our release about the District Ten grant. We also have been contacted by the Appeal about a story for the item we discussed today, about the grant to the Sheriff's Department for the vehicles. So we expect that in tomorrow's paper. Upcoming sponsorships, we're sponsoring the Yuba Sutter Foundation's Tamale Day Dinner on December first. The Marysville Christmas Parade will be held December second, and we're sponsoring that and participating in the parade. If any of our board members would like to walk with us or ride in an agency vehicle, we'd love to have you. So let us know. And on December eighth, we're sponsoring the Winterfest event at Beal Air Force Base and sponsoring a banner for Wheatland High Basketball. Our next meetings are on December fifth, where we'll have a regular board meeting and also an ABP and pod meeting.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to directors reports. Director Blazer?
Okay. I had the pleasure of accompanying Willie last Saturday. We went up to the Bear Yuba Land Trust Awards Ceremony, where we were awarded Business Supporter of the Year. Is that the correct title, I guess?
Yes, and I apologize, I didn't bring the award. I should have brought the award.
I know you should have brought the award. It was a very nice event. I had not been involved in that before, but it was a, a really nice room full of people, all very environmentally conscious. The agency is, is really well-accepted in that group. I mean, we're just a hero to them, it seems like. Willie was the star once again on his little presentation. Why don't you explain to them your little folksy thing that you said?
Little folksy thing that I said? Okay, so since Director Blazer asked me to explain it, I'll explain it briefly. I had your normal acceptance, thank you. Thank the leaders of the Bear Yuba Land Trust, because without policy direction, Aaron Tar, their executive director, and I wouldn't know, you know, how we have common ground and how to move things forward. So I thank their board and then I also thanked our board and thanked Dawn because he was there. That was the kind of the end of my mentally prepared speech. However, their first award that they gave was for like youth leader of the year, something like that. And it just so happened to be a forestry student at Nevada Union High School's ag program, who is, that program is led by my sister, Ms. Olling. And this gal gets this award. And so at the end of my kind of mentally prepared speech, I said, since we are business leaders, we're your business partner of the year, watch me conduct some business. And I asked Mary Ann, who got the award, if she had a job this coming summer. And well, she kind of didn't know what to say and said, well, yes, and kind of. And I said, well, I'm not going to keep putting Mary Ann on the spot, but if Mary Ann is looking for a job, we, we do have interns in all aspects of the agency. So Mary Ann, if you are looking for a job this summer, you know, please contact me. I didn't know this was, I hadn't talked to my sister about this. I didn't know this award was being given. So this was totally just an impromptu way to kind of engage with Bear Yuba Land Trust and show them the things that we do with youth leaders. And I basically said, look, you don't get executive directors like Aaron Tar or general managers like me without starting somewhere. So we'd like to offer some, you know, work for, for Mary Ann if she'd like it. So Mary Ann came up afterwards and her father was there with her and chatted with Dawn and I for a minute. But it was just a, a way to kind of engage in a, in a way that's just more fun than your standard, you know, thank you speech.
Awesome. And when you mentioned the fact that your sister was her teacher, I guess, that really brought a great reaction from the crowd. Anyway, it was inspiring and I appreciate the fact that I could go up there. Thanks.
Director Fur?
There's a ribbon cutting for Costco tomorrow, and I believe the water agency is responsible partially for Costco being here. Millions of dollars spent to improve the sewer and drainage and area around so that they would come in. So thank you to the water agency for making tomorrow happen. And then of course, happy Thanksgiving to all of you. I hope you have a lovely holiday.
Awesome, thank you. Director Messing?
First off, I'd like to introduce Stuartville Crest City of Marysville City Council. Thank you for coming to our meeting. And then also wanted to thank the agency for supporting the city of Marysville and Ellis Lake, because it's the first thing I see driving into town and it looked beautiful this morning for a change. So what they're doing is working. So the other thing I wanted to mention about the cars that we already approved was the importance of good reliable cars for the Sheriff's Department. I had a good friend that nearly died at Bullards Bar Reservoir when his anchor hit him in the head. And the only thing that saved his life was the Sheriff's Department that was there drove him all the way down and met the ambulance at the seventy-six station to get him to the hospital. And they said, those few minutes saved his life. So very important what we're doing up there. I have a question for you, Willie. I had a constituent ask, are we building a pond at the new facility? And I said, I don't believe so. I never saw that in the plans. Is that a water detention basin? Okay.
It's a runoff detention pond. It won't be filled with water.
Yeah, just wanted to clarify that. That's it.
Thank you, Director Matthews.
As we all know, we had fall rains. We also had spring rains. So the rice industry harvested later. They got pinched because of the flow restrictions that start in November. So there's still fields that are waiting on list to be flooded. And I just wanted to be able to thank the water agency and through the accord that we have water in these type of situations. And of course, the reason we have the restrictions is because the fish, if we put in too much water now, we have to keep that same flow through the middle of February. So the agency is, the irrigators are doing the right thing. Just wanted everybody to know that they are both cooperating in a tough time.
Thank you. Director Bishop?
Okay. I've got a few items today. It seems like I've had my agency hat on quite a bit the last couple of weeks and in the next couple of weeks. So first of all, I went with Jackie and several representatives from Beal Air Force Base as well as Yuba County to the Association Defense Communities Installation Innovation Conference. And a lot of the same kind of points that we've been hearing from that organization and from our partners out of Beal, the importance of housing, but also the importance of infrastructure resiliency to our national defense from a base standpoint. So in particular, a large component of that is power resiliency. And so anyway, just wanted to pass that along. Also, I went to the Mountain Counties Water Resource Authorities or Associations Fall Water Conference. And there was a very diverse range of topics at that, and it was very well done. Also had the opportunity to go on a salmon expedition with Bear River School. And I'd been about two years since I had an opportunity to do that. And I must say that it was a great program before, but Circle has improved it even more. I was very impressed. One of the three stops on the river was at a habitat restoration site, where we talked about habitat restoration. And at the very first site, there was a great hands-on exercise where they had all the students essentially make a little model of the river in a little box. And they had them put Native Americans on the shore of the river and they had them put a lot of salmon in the river. And then they also had them take most of the Native Americans away and most of the salmon away and just kind of show the changes in the watershed. So I think it was very helpful, very hands-on to show that. And of course, probably the kids' favorite stop was the second one, where they actually get a bunch of bugs from the river and look at them under microscopes. So anyway, it was, it was great and, and I appreciate Circle. I appreciate the water agency. I think we had either over or about eleven hundred students from Yuba County go this year. I think we had every single public school except for three. Every fourth grade class except for classes at three schools go this year. So my goal next year is to have a hundred percent participation. So I know we're getting really close to that and, and hopefully we can get there next year. So next week is Aqua and Aqua JPIA. So I'll be representing the agency there. And then I also wanted to say thank you to DeeDee for organizing an employee trip to the Causeway Classic this, this last Saturday. It was a great game. My consult condolences to the Sac State alumni since UC Davis won. It was very wet. We had a great time. I look forward to doing it again next year. And finally, since it is Thanksgiving, just wanted to say a couple of thanks. First of all, thankful for our amazing staff. Appreciate what you guys do every day. And also I'm extremely thankful for the agency's ability to invest in Yuba County in support of our mission. So with that, we will take a ten-minute break. So ten, actually a nine-minute break. So ten fifteen, we will start closed session. There are two items on the agenda. And so thank you very much. Oh, yes, sorry. Thank you, appreciate that. Any public comment on any closed session items? Okay. Great. Thank you very much for that reminder. So see you at ten fifteen.